Good evening. This is the regularly scheduled Monroe Planning Commission meeting for Monday, January 23rd. It's 7:00 PM. Hannah, would you call roll please?
I'd be happy to. Commissioners present and establishing a quorum, Commissioners Bull, Blair, Walker, Lewis, and Dawkins.
Thank you very much. We have three minutes allocated to any members of the public that would like to speak on any topic that is not related to the current agenda. Is there anybody waiting?
We have a couple people in the audience. If you'd like to submit public comment, just raise your hand.
Okay, fantastic. So, next item is the minutes from the regular Planning Commission meeting Monday, January 9th.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from January 9th Planning Commission meeting.
I just have one question for clarification, if I may. So when we say in the staff present, that is just Planning Commission staff, because I know elected official Mayor Thomas was here. I know Finance Director Hassert was here. So, just for a point of clarification, do we include everybody that?
Thank you for pointing that out. It should include everybody, so I'll go ahead and revise that.
Okay. Fantastic. And City Clerk by call. Perfect. I'm sorry for interrupting. Second with those changes?
A second it?
All in favor of approving the minutes with the recommended changes, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. Thank you. Alright, let's get to our new business item. And today we have under new business item 7.1 Introduction to the Monroe Budget and Finance 101 with Finance Director Hassert. Did I say that correctly?
You did, thank you. Here's my slideshow to get this started for you. So, thank you for having me this evening. We like to try and do this when we start a new term, so that, you know, just to give you a little introduction to budget. I am a presenter who enjoys questions. I think the more interactive, the more fun versus me just talking at you for the next however long. So please, you know, whenever you, and I'll ask Hannah to walk online, so if any of the folks who dialed in tonight have questions, she can stop me because on my screen right now, all I can see is the presentation, so I can't see if there's questions. So what we're going to do here is give you a very, very high level of Budget 101. I think a couple of you've actually seen parts of this already, so maybe we'll get you to the point where you can give this someday. Who knows? And I have tailored this a little bit for you guys as well, because even though it's really not budget, I know there were some questions about the multifamily property tax exemption, so we do have some slides at the end of the presentation to go into that as well. So, so with that, Mr. Commissioner, if I may?
Yes ma'am.
Thank you. So tonight, I thought what I would go over is a little bit of what a budget is, why we do a budget, fund accounting, some best practices, some steps that the mayor and council have taken specifically beginning back during COVID and the COVID lockdown, and then talk about some sample funding sources that are available to the city. And then, as I mentioned, within that, I'm throwing the multifamily tax exemption in there. So why do we budget, or what is a budget? It is the legal document that basically says this is how much money we think we're going to have, or what our resources have during a given fiscal period, and this is how we plan to spend it. It specifies where those resources come from. Even though I put income on the slide, we try not to say income because we're not a private business where we make a profit. These are resources we have available to be able to provide services. The budgets here in the state of Washington can be annual or biannual. The city is now adopting a biannual budget, so the budget that we are currently under covers both fiscal years 2023 and 24. But unlike the state's biannual budget that goes July through June, we go calendar year, January through December. We also adopt it at the level at which we are held accountable. So the state auditors come in and they audit our financial performance every year, our financial reports, making sure that we are presenting all of our activity in a fair manner. And one of the things that they look at is whether we stayed within our adopted budget. If the budget is adopted at the line item level, then they would have to look at every line item to make sure we did not go over that line item. So as you can imagine, because we have about, you know, over a thousand line items, that's, we'd have to be doing budget amendments constantly. We actually adopt the budget at the fund level, so, and we'll talk about funds here shortly. That's the level at which then we are held accountable. Little known fact, state law actually says that if you go over budget at the level at which it was adopted, legally, your citizens can go after your council members to pay the difference. Because ultimately, council is responsible for the fiscal activities of a jurisdiction. So obviously, if I want to keep my job, I don't want to have that happen for that, so. And the other thing that's interesting about local governments is that our budgets have to be balanced. So unlike the federal government who can go into the deficit and actually budget with the deficit, we are not legally allowed to do that. The other thing too is that if we don't have an adopted balanced budget before the next fiscal period begins, legally, we can't open the doors either until such time as council adopts a balanced budget. I do know, in, I've been doing this now for over 30 years for a number of jurisdictions. I call them my former lives. And during my journey with different jurisdictions, when I talk to my different peers, I've known some cities, luckily never any that I have worked for, where they were literally meeting up until midnight on December 31st, trying to balance and adopt a budget. That, that, that is not a good place to be. That usually means your council, your administration don't get along, or your council doesn't get along with each other. Anyway, we hope to never be in that situation, so. Why do we budget outside of it's legally required, as I just talked about? If you don't have an adopted budget, you can't open your doors, you can't pay your bills. It does foster strategic planning policy development. This is kind of where you guys come in. So this council, even though now we adopted, we adopt a budget on a two-year cycle, we also take a look at how things look over a five, six-year period. In doing that, when they're trying to think about where they want to be over that five, six-year period, they look to your Planning Commission, your Park Board for recommendations, especially with comp planning. Comp planning lays it out, what we're going to do over the next however minute, you know, usually up to 20 years, quite frankly. And capital facilities planning, that's a very, very important component that also goes into the budget. So while you guys make recommendations for council to adopt a six-year CIP per se, those first two years get wrapped into the budget, and we want to make sure that we can cover that. So all of that comes back to the budget document. We also use it as a communications tool. I know you guys all went out and read the 158 pages of the budget document, so you know exactly where we're spending money. And if we've done the budget document correctly, it also tells you then how much is going to each department, how many staff that includes, you know, what we are doing for professional services, where the funds come from to pay for it, including how much we're charging for property taxes. And we'll talk about property taxes a little bit later as well. So it also helps departments know where we're supposed to be spending. You know, we may ask for certain things, but if it didn't make it to the final budget, the budget document lets us know that. It's also a way then for our ratepayers, our property, or our taxpayers, all of our constituents to know what we say we're going to spend the money on, and then they can hold us accountable to that. So if I go out and I say I want money and I need to buy another police car, I get the budget for that, but then I don't buy a police car, I go spend it somewhere else. My document says I was supposed to buy a police car, so hopefully someone's keeping watch. Usually that means myself, Deborah, or the city administrator, the mayor, and through reports, regular, very regular reports to the council, they're watching. It's an accountability document too, so. So I mentioned fund accounting. Unlike private sector for-profit organizations where when they do their accounting, it's about the bottom line, what are they making for profits? If they're SEC traded, you know, what are they making for their shareholders? For governments, we don't make a profit. We are all about accountability. How are we spending the money? Are we spending the money the way we are supposed to? And the way we can try and show that is by accounting for everything in what's called funds. And there's this big, long definition about self-balancing set of accounts and all that. I didn't want to bore you with that piece. But the whole idea is it's supposed to help improve transparency. Theoretically, everything that the city of Monroe does can be accounted for in one fund, the general fund. But if everything is in there, it gets hard to pick out what piece might be for real estate excise taxes, what pieces impact fees, what pieces utilities. And it makes it even harder to show that I only spent utility money on that utility as required by accounting practice and by law. So the way we do that is we create the separate funds to track those things. For the city of Monroe, we use 22 separate funds to do that. And again, the idea is that the number of funds, while it may seem like a lot, the intent is to improve transparency about what the money is and how we are spending it. So really, that's what this slide is supposed to illustrate. So I mentioned general fund. That is the main current expense fund that most governments, nonprofits use and have. For, depending on the size of your organization, theoretically, it could be the only fund you have. So for example, if you're a special purpose district, like a fire district, you may only have the one general fund, because the only service you're providing is fire. You don't really have to have a lot of different funds. For the city, we not only do our general services, we also have water. We have a water utility, we have a sewer utility, stormwater, we collect special revenues. One thing I should point out too is the way that these funds are laid out, and we'll talk about that here for a moment. We're going to spend a little time on this slide, is that, that, this is all dictated by the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, which is a national board that kind of lays out how we present accounting information for governments, nonprofits. That's what the auditors audit us to. So similar to the FASB board that the for-profit segment does, we have GASP. Very similar, they're both overseen by the Board of Accountancy. So whether you are Seattle, Washington, Monroe, Washington, Monroe, Louisiana, Washington DC, we all use the same numbers for our funds. Because that number kind of then dictates, if you know, if you, if you've learned the numbers, I can look at any of their reports and based on those first three numbers tell you with some certainty what that, what that money is about. Hey. So for funds that start 001 through 099, these are what you call your current expense funds. So I mentioned the general fund. Things that are more general in nature that may, that may serve the good of the whole organization tends to be in a current expense fund. These are the three that we use. We use the general fund, police, parks operation, finance, community development are all in this fund. We also have an OO2 contingency fund that, you know, we'll talk about here also in a little bit. It's kind of a reserve fund. And then we also have a donation fund. Again, I could have both the contingency and the donation fund in the general fund, but especially for the donation fund, when people make donations to the city, and we are, we're not a 501(c)(3), but depending on your tax situation, and if you itemize, if you do donate to the city, it could be tax deductible for you. I always like to make a little plug for that. If you donate money to the city and you say it needs to be used for a specific item, we can only accept it if we're, we're going to spend it on that item. We can't then go off. So we actually have people who donate to the city. One of the big programs that we get a lot of donated money for is our K-9 program in the police department. So we track that in the donation fund so that we can easily show when we spend money out of that, it was spent for the K-9 program. Otherwise, sometimes it just sits there until it, it grows enough to be used. We have a particular person who chooses to remain anonymous, who gives us $300 a month to support our K-9 program. We also have some corporate partners who donate towards music in the park to our flower basket program. So instead of just putting it in the general fund in the Parks Department where it could easily get mixed with other parks programs, we track that in a separate fund, so we can easily show we're spending it as we were told to, if that makes sense. So we move from the OO1s through O99s to the 100 series. These are what's called special revenue funds. And basically, these are now taxes, unlike the property taxes that are a lot more flexible and more broad. These are going to be things like the state shared gas taxes that by law are restricted and can only be used for street operations. So again, if we were small enough, we could have that in the general fund. But it makes more sense to track it in its own separate special revenue fund, and since it is special revenue, it would have to start with a 1, so in our case, 105. That way, I can show that that gas money is being spent on street operations. We also have hotel motel taxes, and we do the same thing there. So again, it's that transparency easier to show when it's in its own separate fund. As you can see, we have four of them. We also have narcotics enforcement. When the police department does narcotics enforcement, after the case is adjudicated through the courts, sometimes that money comes back to the jurisdiction that made the original arrest. Not only by state law, but by federal law, those monies are very restricted as to how they can be spent if they're seizure money. And it has to be spent for drug enforcement activities. So the easiest way to show that and to be able to show the auditors that is to track that at its own separate fund. Actually, as a little aside, we actually have separate bank accounts for that money as well, because it is so federally restricted. So we don't even co-mingle it with the city's general checking account to really make sure that we keep them separate. Then, of course, we have real estate excise taxes. Debt service, it's debt service associated with tax activities, taxing activities. That'll make a little bit more sense here in a moment, but the reason I say that is we also have debt service that's associated with our utilities that we track in a utility fund, which is a 400 series, not the 200 series debt fund. And then we also have capital here that is supported by taxes. They would be a 300 series. So, you know, our two big ones are the parks CIP. So we keep parks operations in the general fund. We keep parks capital tracked in a 300 series fund. Again, I could have it in a general fund, but since there are specific revenues that we use to support the capital such as impact fees or general GMA fees is another way to call them. Sometimes we transfer REIT over there. We want to make sure we're showing we're only using that for capital and not for operations. I mentioned utilities, they're enterprise funds, we use 400s. We have what's called internal service funds. This big black line here is a line of demarcation. Everything to the left is supported by taxes. So notice, as the numbers get bigger, the use of the funds become more restrictive. And everything from 001 to 399 is some type of tax supported. So that's why I mentioned general obligation debt in a 200 series. 4 and 500 is supported by rates. So when you pay your water bill, you are paying a rate for a commodity. That's why it's in the 400. That's why it's called an enterprise. It's treated more like a standalone business. Then we have a series out here, 600, we call other people's money. In a lot of times, especially smaller cities, they won't have a 600 series. We do. We have a couple of them actually. One of which is, again, I mentioned impact fees, and we'll talk, and I'll mention this again later in the presentation. We collect on behalf of the fire district and the school districts, impact fees for their operations. But the way state law is written, they can't collect that directly themselves. They, state law wants it to be somewhat one-stop shopping, so when they come and get that permit for that development, and the developer pays all the impact fees at that point, they don't want the developer to have to then go to, you know, however many jurisdictions to pay the impact fees. So we, as the primary jurisdiction, collect those impact fees, but they're not our money. So we track that in a 600 fund, and then that money gets remitted to the jurisdiction it belongs to. We also have a transportation benefit district that legally is a separate reporting government. Our current council is also the board of the transportation district. But when the transportation district meets, they meet as board members, not council. It is a separate meeting. They do a separate budget. But the city collects the money, and we actually have an inter-local agreement with the TBD that then the city's one and only employee collects the money, and then we make, we have an agreement with the city as to what activities we will pay for that support transportation, our transportation network, and is eligible for TBD money. So on the city's books, we track that as a 600 and other people's money. On the TBD's books, we track that as a general fund because it's tax money that comes in, that then they get to spend on both operations and capital for streets. So again, I talked about most flexible is the furthest left. As you go further right, it gets more restricted. What's interesting about that is if the council, say we had a lot of property tax or sales tax coming in, and they wanted to subsidize, say, water rates, they could, through council action in the budget, transfer money from the current expense fund to the water fund and say, okay, we have this amount. Now what else do we need to make that fund whole? Because again, even though it's treated like a business, they're not in it to make a profit. So we design the rates to break even, break even, meaning we, we calculate what it costs to operate the system, what staff do we need, what benchmarks do we want to meet, what do we need for capital, both, you know, in the current year and over the next six-year period? What do we need to pay its debt service? And that all gets factored into, you know, if I need a million dollars and I have 10 ratepayers, how much per ratepayer's got to pay it? That's a very, very simplified example. If the council wants to send a million dollars over, now I only need to collect nine million from my ratepayers. That's rarely the case. But I bring that up because council can do that, because this is more flexible. What councils cannot do, and the, and the state auditors were very quick to make sure this didn't happen, especially during the Great Recession, is hey, I can raise rates without going to a vote of the people. For property taxes, I can only raise it 1% without a vote, or IPD, the implicit price deflator. So let's just raise rates and then transfer money from here to the general fund. And that is a big no-no. Money cannot go from right to left unless there is an accounting standard that allows it, or it is legally allowed. And the reason I say that is from an accounting standard standpoint, because we are supposed to treat these, like the water utility is its own separate business. If it were a private business and not city-owned, it would pay property taxes. It would have its own Board of Directors. It would have its own CFO. It would have its own CEO. But we don't have to have that, that staffing level because we have it, it was the general fund, and we provide services to that utility. So I am allowed to not only collect my overhead recovery for the portion of my time, the mayor's time, the council's time, that is directly related to that utility's operations. We can also charge it taxes. And we do charge utility taxes to both our water and our sewer fund that then helps to pay for general operations of the city. Just like your brick and mortars on Main Street pay taxes, they pay utility taxes when they pay their utility bills. They pay property taxes on the value of the property. And in exchange, they get police protection, they get planning, they get code enforcement, they get the general services that cities offer. So that's the trade-off. So it seems like just because the city, you know, why are we doing that? But it's to keep the activities separate.
Becky, could we, could we let Jay jump in?
Oh, yes, of course.
Would you mind?
Not at all, please.
Yeah, Becky, thanks for the presentation so far. I feel like I'm getting about four college courses put in.
I will turn you into a finance director if you let.
I, I am fascinated, but I'm a nerd with this stuff. So earlier you said that with REITs, the city collects it and then assigns it to the correct district. Is that just in cases of REITs collected when it's outside the city limits?
And if you, and if I can indulge your patience just a little bit, I will have a slide where we talk about REIT.
Okay.
So I think that'll help clear it up when we get there.
Okay, awesome. And then my other question was, when you mentioned the limitation on raising property taxes by only 1% a year, are you just talking about the city? Because my property tax went up like 40% this year by the county, so.
So in the state of Washington, it used to be that through council action or a board action, property taxes could go up 6% a year, and you didn't have to go and ask for a voter permission, anything like that. Then there was a referendum 43 that was passed back, I want to say mid to late 80s that required that if a jurisdiction was 10,000 in population or higher, they were limited either to 6% or the IPD, which is the implicit price deflator, whichever is lower. The IPD is similar to the CPI, except it uses a different basket of goods, so it tended to be lower than the CPI was each year. There were some years where IPD was only 1 or 2%, so that restrained larger cities from going up to 6% unless they passed a second ordinance, all of which had to go through a public hearing, and extensive public hearings. You couldn't just do one public hearing and hope nobody showed up. You had to advertise back the laws, you've got to advertise once a week for two consecutive weeks before the hearing, before each of the hearings, and then have people, give the people a chance to comment on where you want to set your property taxes. Then there was someone named Tim Eymann who decided that wasn't enough, and then was able to push through what was Initiative 747 back in the day that wanted to limit the property tax increase to 1% or IPD, whichever was lower. Even though that went through the court system and the courts found that to be unconstitutional with the way the initiative was written, the legislature went ahead and codified it and passed RCW to make that so. Long explanation to answer your question, Commissioner Walker. It does apply to all taxing jurisdictions, but that is without a vote. So, and I could do another three, four hours on proper, frankly, but I'll try and put this in a nutshell a little bit. So what happens then? So what happens then if no, if everybody raises by one percent. It shouldn't matter how much your assessed value goes up, cause the one percent is based on the total we collected. Not the total individual houses paid. So sometimes what can happen, especially in smaller jurisdictions. Is if all of a sudden someone ages out and they can, if they can qualify for a senior discount. Because of their low, you know, their low income senior. The amount the city collects is not going to change. It then gets spread over everybody else. So that can adjust it a little bit. Most likely, like we just had the vote with Monroe School District. Where they wanted to reset a levy. The fire district this last year asked to raise their levy up to a certain amount. And voters approved that. And when they do that, that new levy rate gets applied against your new higher assessed value. If none of that had happened and everybody just did the one percent. Theoretically, your taxes would have only gone up one percent for the whole amount, not just the city's amount. But when you get into property taxes and I'll put a plug in for the budget document, there, there is a real good section in there. In the general fund, where the general fund starts, where it talks about property taxes. My house in Monroe actually pays, I wanna say seven or eight different jurisdictions and property taxes.
Right.
City of Monroe actually usually does not take its one percent, it's allowed. We do what's called banking it. So I'm getting a little ahead of myself here in the presentation. But just because we banked it, the rest of them tend not to. They take their full amount. And again, there was also the votes that had to be accounted for with the school district, with the fire district. That also affects your property taxes. So that could be why you saw such a large increase.
Gotcha. Amazing. Thank you so much.
Yeah, so. And you know what? And and I give everybody this invitation, but especially for you guys, if you ever wanna come in and we can chat one on one. I can take you through that math. Sometimes seeing it. Um, I'll admit that the house that I use in the budget book was the one that I was living in in the farm. Um, cause it's easy to have an example and then be able to show the dollars. Um, if memory serves, that particular house, you know, I've since bought a house here in Monroe. Um, but I'm in the woodland, so I'm actually paid Stahomish School District instead of Monroe. You talk about a big tax bill. Monroe's portion is maybe ten percent of that entire tax bill that you pay. Every year is what stays here to support our services. The biggest chunks go to either the school district or the state. In your tax bill. So all of this over here is being done with just ten percent of your property tax bill.
Impressive. You're, you're good with your money, Becky. Thank you.
Well, you know, we don't do a good job of really letting people know that. We are actually very, very efficient. With the money that we get, you know. I used to pay when I lived in a different city in one of my former lives for um. Alarm monitoring service for my house. And I realized I was paying more per month for that. And I was paying in my property tax bill for police services. It's like, you know, and you think about what you get for that. You know, so, but that's where the other taxes that come in, the sales taxes, the utility taxes get to be important as well. Cause we don't wanna just rely on property taxes. So.
Awesome. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Great questions. I love the interaction. So. So some best practices for budget. You know, I mentioned, we don't wanna be just reliant on property taxes. So we have reserves. We target a certain level for reserves. And again, perfect example is property taxes. If we were a small rural city that we didn't really have. Commercial, we didn't have retail that's paying us sales taxes. And we only rely on property taxes, or if we were a fire district and that's their only real revenue is property taxes. I may wanna have a higher reserve level. There's no guidance on what a good reserve level is, cause you're gonna wanna take a look at. Where all your money comes from, how diverse is it? How reliant on it are you? For example, property taxes, as those of you who own property know, we have to pay them, they're due twice a year. End of April, end of October. Banks, if you do it through your escrow company, pay. October and or April and October. Once in a while, you get those folks to pay the whole amount in April. But what they're not doing is paying one twelfth every month. And yet our expenses, our payroll, our utilities, all of that stuff is paid every month. So if I don't wanna add interest expense to our accounts, because I don't have the cash flow. To pay, cause I'm not gonna get the bulk of my money until May. Cause it's always on a delay, cause the county collects for us. We don't get it directly. Then I want a certain amount of reserves in the bank to be able to use to make my monthly bills. Until I get that big infusion of cash. During the recession, there were some cities that had to take short term loans from their local banks just to make payroll. And now you're paying interest on top of your, your expenses to do that. We're fortunate here in that property taxes is not our largest revenue stream to the general fund. It is actually sales taxes. That was a challenge during COVID, because all of a sudden, when everything was shut down. People couldn't go spend. So now we were worried about what that was gonna do to our property ta- or our sales taxes. And when I talk later about steps the council took. The council, the mayor especially, right away. To be preemptive, we sat down and we did a comprehensive uh, budget amendment that year. To really cut back on spending, we had to delay a lot of projects, but we wanted to make sure that we could get through COVID. And we actually developed a three year um. Um, recovery plan is what we had planned on. So that we could get through COVID without having to do layoffs and lose staff. And I don't know this a hundred percent, but everybody I've talked to so far, we were the only city that didn't have to lose staff. During COVID. So that, that was nice, because as we know, now we're in a hard labor market and it's hard to hire staff. I think we're doing better than all of our peers also from that aspect. Um, so there was a lot of strategy that was used. And again, we use the budget. To talk about that strategy, to be able to look at it long term and say, here's what we're looking at and here's what we're trying to do. Um, and part of the reason we were also able to do that is we maintained fully funded reserves. So we do have a reserve policy that was adopted by council by resolution. We keep one month's worth of op, general fund operating. In reserves, so that turn tends to be, you know, it's whatever the budget's gonna be that year or now biennium. What is one month's worth of operating? That's our target to always keep on hand. And we also have the contingency reserve, which was that fund O O two I mentioned earlier. Um, we also try, we, we took a good comprehensive look at our, at our. Revenue streams, specifically sales taxes. I mentioned sales taxes earlier. And identified like the sales taxes associated with construction. We actually call those one time revenue. Cause the idea is, once that house is constructed, no more sales tax on that construction activity. So even though we may be getting it every year, at some point you run out of money. Or during the great recession, we had a housing bump. They quit building, nobody was buying. Now you've got a good chunk of change. And for us, it's, it's estimated at around half a million dollars a year. That you're not gonna have anymore. So we deliberately take that money, we treat it as one time, we do not use it for like salaries. Which is an ongoing expense. We use it for one time expenses, like a capital project. Or a project that has a finite timeline. So that we don't become dependent on that. And if it goes away, all of a sudden you're in a cut situation. Um, sometimes it's a little hard to do, cause you see it sitting there and you think, oh, but if we could use that for this. It's a very deliberative discussion that this mayor and this council has when we look at that money. Other monies that are similar to that windfalls that we may have, ARPA money, the American Rescue Plan Act money. It's technically one time. We got a huge infusion of that. It was meant to help cities, whether the impacts of having had the shutdown during twenty twenty. And the losses, a lot of cities across the country lost a lot of revenue. Because of those shutdowns and yet, you know, and they had to lay off staff. It was meant to help restore that because the government imposed shutdowns. Was, it was beyond our control. Um, but what we didn't want to do is. Like staff up beyond that, because once we had that money, there's no more money coming in from that, that funding. So that's what we mean by identifying one time revenues. And sticking, keeping that for one time expenses. Um, so there's a budget discipline involved with that. Developing multi-year budget projections, trying to budget out five, six years. I don't know if this will let me, this is where it hurts not to have two screens. We re- we budget, when we do the general fund budget, especially for the general fund. Rates we can raise, you know, we're supposed to keep utilities whole. If my operation costs go up, I'm not making a profit, I'm not paying shareholders. I'm just covering my costs. I can adjust rates to cover my costs. So those I don't have to worry about as much for longer term. But for the general fund, I do have to worry about it. And it's not sharing that screen. Shut, stop, share. And now I wanna share. Here we go, six year projection. We go through, when we budget and we take the general fund. And we look at what was adopted. And based on some work, a retreat with council about some agreed upon. Assumptions for the out years, cause as we know, the further out we get, the fuzzier the crystal ball gets. But we do make those assumptions and take a look at the fifty thousand dot foot level. What does that look like if we keep spending exactly as we are today and everything happens as it does today? At some point, we're gonna run out of money. And we expect it to happen around year three to four. As you notice here, it actually doesn't happen to year four. But the caution we give, what we don't wanna see is, oh, we're gonna run out of money in year two. Or the year three, when it goes red, it's huge red. Cause then that means it's not gonna give us a lot of time to adjust to that. The flip side of that is, if we don't run out of any money over the six year period, are we losing out on opportunity? So the reason that that sweet spot is between years three and four is the best analogy to use is say. You've got a full tank of gas in your car and it's in the driveway and you're getting ready to take a trip. And you know, so you know, you start in Seattle, you're gonna take I ninety to Boston. At some point, if I just keep driving down the road and I make no turns, no stops, nothing, I'm gonna run out of gas. Right? Cause I know what my destination is. Now it doesn't mean I'm gonna run out of gas, cause I'm gonna pay attention to the gas gauge and come, you know. You know, when I get to a quarter, take a gas, year three, four, I know I gotta pull off somewhere and go get some more gas. Or I cut my trip short and go home. Those are the decisions we can make. If I think I'm gonna sit in my car and try and take a trip and never use any of that gas, I never leave the driveway. And that's what I mean by losing opportunity. So we, we create this, this spreadsheet, look at it over the six years. It's a best practice to do that because. We wanna make sure that the choices that we are making in the current budget. Doesn't run out of gas too soon. Or we're not hurting ourselves for opportunities because we have too much gas. Through the five, six years. Hopefully that makes sense.
So Becky, your revenues, projections, is this based on formulas? History, thirty years of experience, work of you?
All of the above.
Okay.
So when we sat down with council a few years back, and again, in the budget book, we have a section where we talk about this. And we actually highlight which meetings they were. One of the things I looked at, you know, I is my bigger categories. Property tax, as Commissioner Walker pointed out, you know, I know I can only go up one percent. We usually don't take the one percent. So if I'm collecting three and a half million, my projection out's gonna be three and a half million. But that's before we add new construction. And so we looked at the history, how much new construction are we getting? Every year and what does that equate to for property taxes? And we actually went conservative. Cause over the last about ten years, we're averaging about thirty-five million dollars a year in new assessed value from new construction. We were using, we used twenty in this forecast. Um, so again, better to, to estimate less and get more kind of thing. We look at sales taxes. I looked at, at population increase. How, how fast is our population increasing over the last ten years? And it came to an average of one point two six percent. You know, the idea being that, you know, the more populations and sales taxes come to the point of destination. That could equate to sales taxes increasing by that one point six or one point two six. To prove it, I actually went and looked at sales tax receipts and it actually did increase higher than that. So we went with the lower number. So there was a little bit of looking at history. There was a little bit of looking at, you know, as, as, as I work with my, my finance manager, manager, the former. Management analyst, when they were working with me for budget, wanting to learn. I kept drumming into them, get to know your, your community, get to know your revenues. This is a community that likes to spend money at the restaurants and does a lot of e-commerce. You know, so if we know that, we can look for trends. I actually have a spreadsheet that I can share that we actually trend out our sales taxes. And see what kind of cycle we get. You know, so when I'm giving council in their monthly report, here's how much we got in sales taxes this month. How it compares to budget. I don't just say, oh, one twelfth is this, this is what we got. How does that look? Cause when we look at trending on the sales taxes. And let me share that one.
So property taxes is a one month lag after our April, October, but sales tax is similar.
Two month lag. So when the month ends, the, the retail shop has a month to report to the state's Department of Revenue. Who then breaks it out and we'll talk about how it breaks out here in a bit. Um, and then sends it to the jurisdiction. So by the time we get it, cause it comes once a month at the end of the month. I'm on a two month lag. And the reason that's important to know is that then when I break it down and I look at history. Notice here, this is January, trying to show this without making it too small. January, there's a certain expectation. This is November sales. Notice what I receive in February, it's a big jump and it tends to be my, my strongest month. What happened two months before? Christmas sales. And then you have the Christmas hangover. And you can see that in the trending. So what we do is we figure out a weighted average. If we budgeted expecting five million dollars this next year in. Sales taxes. I use the prior five years to figure out how much do we get on average each month. And then when we receive our money, I compare that to that weighted average. You know, what's five percent of my budget is this, what did I collect? Instead of just one twelfth. So we get a better feel, we're not panicking then come, you know. March, April, that it dropped again, because we know it's gonna pick up again September. November's money starts to pick up again. That's back to school sales. What was interesting is when you look at two thousand twenty, which is this dark blue line. You see where all of a sudden starts dropping compared to prior years. That's the COVID shutdown. At least for a little bit. And then the governor lets certain, certain retail open again. Because it was essential. Fred Meyer's Walmart, home improvement, cause people had to stay home. So it was determined that home improvement uh, could be open. You know, in case you needed to make adjustments to create a home office. We have a lows. We were fortunate in that aspect and then we could see it in our sales taxes. Oh, sorry.
Jake.
Yeah, I just, I thought it might be helpful perspective from my fellow commissioners. I just looked at our tax statement and it's only thirty nine. Thirty-nine dollars a month to the city of our property taxes, that blows my mind. So I, I guess it just puts in perspective how important the sales tax is going forward and. Just you mentioning that, that Lowe's item, it's interesting to think about if they weren't in the city and how that might affect. Our comprehensive plan ideas. In terms of thinking about business as a sales tax contributor, it's pretty crazy, so. Anyway, sorry.
Perfect, why I've been invited to speak to you guys tonight? Before you really get into your comprehensive planning, so thank you. I, I honestly did not pay him to say these things. Anyway, so yeah, so sales taxes, we, we pay very close attention. Who's paying, when it comes in, which segments pay what? Um, like I said, we isolate out construction, sales taxes. Um, it tends to be about thirteen percent. Of our overall sales tax collection, at least it was while the housing market was still extremely strong. I've actually been finding that that, that ratio has been staying about the same. Even though everything we hear is that housing is slowing down, apparently people are still buying in the suburbs. So, um, but we wanna be careful about that and not get too fat and happy on it because. Again, even if they're still buying out here, as we know, there's missing land for the missing middle, there's. You know, at some point you run out of land. You know, and then what do you do? You either build up or you stop building. You know, so those are the kind of things that at least in my department, that those are the kind of things that keep me up. When I'm thinking about how do we keep? From being in the red all the time on that six year projection, quite frankly. So, so that's sales taxes. And again, I think I've been a little bit all over the place, so forgive me. And let's go back to slideshow. Current slide. So, you know, ongoing revenues, ongoing expenses, multi-year budgets. The other thing we do is establish appropriate debt service ratios, one of the things. If you've ever taken finance classes in college, you know, they talk about cash is king. But it's also the most expensive way to go to pay for things. Especially furry government, so when we are looking at our capital facilities plans. And we want to build, say, or expand a wastewater treatment plant. If you wanna pay cash for it, you gotta collect enough in your utility rates to put away that much money to then build it. And again, we figure out what that is and we include that in our rates. Versus an appropriate amount of debt. Then I only have to collect what I need for the debt service, plus I'm spreading it out over twenty or thirty years, depending on the life of the. Capital that's being built. Then I don't have to collect as much cash, so that can actually keep my rates lower. And that's the easiest example. For a while there, the city's philosophy was to try and pay cash for as much as we can. We went through and I actually worked with the finance committee for over a year, we adopted a formal debt policy. Which our bond rating agency absolutely loves. Um, that says we can issue debt for specific types of capital. Up to a certain limit. And we can only go up to certain debt ratio coverages. And what a debt ratio coverage means is that. Say my utility, I, my operations cost me ten million dollars. The revenue I brought in was twelve million. That leaves me a two million dollar deficit. My, my debt is half a million dollars. I have a four point zero coverage debt ratio for that debt. That's a great coverage because the, the benchmark for the industry is a minimum of one point two five. What they wanna see is the amount of money you have after your operations. Is at least one and a quarter times your debt obligation for the year. The rest of it then is usually funding by reserves and the part of capital I wanna pay with cash. Um, so we now have that debt coverage. And then we can factor in an appropriate amount of debt. The other reason you would wanna use debt for some of it and not always pay cash gets into what's called generational equity. And what we mean by that is again, using the treatment plant as an example. Is when you wanna expand a treatment plant. If you are collecting cash, you are collecting from people who are already here using the existing capacity of that treatment plant. Then you pay cash, you expanded, everybody knew moving in after that is not paying for it. Because I'm not collecting cash for it anymore, it's already been built. Versus if I do part of it with debt. Then everybody, you know, after I build it, cause I've used debt, some cash. Everybody, including those already here and the new people coming in, all help to get to pay for it. So that's what we mean by that generational equity. And yes, it is fair to have the existing people pay for a portion of it. We'll get into that concept again a little bit here with impact fees. Because they still get a benefit, you know, I, I don't have to shut down collections. In a water system, I don't have to tell you to boil your water because I can't treat it. You know, there, there's benefit to also having that capital. But they're not the only ones who are reaping the benefit, the new people coming in are also reaping a benefit. And they now get to help pay for it too. So that's what we mean by generational equity. And in fact, and again, I keep plugging my budget book, there's a section in there when we, uh, uh, under utilities. Where we talked about back in two thousand eighteen, when we were looking at the sewer utility. Cause as you know, that's the largest part of our utility bill here in Monroe. We actually were able to look at it over a six year period. Plug in appropriate debt for the capital that we needed to support the then comp plan. And the then capital facilities plan. Our debt coverage was still in the three range. We were actually able to lower sewer rates by two and a half percent. And impose a ten percent utility tax to the general fund. Which then helped bo- bolster both the general fund and the street operations fund, quite frankly. Made a lot of utility customers happy, cause two and a half percent on an almost hundred dollar bill is significant amount. And yet we still keep the sewer fund whole. And it proved out over this whole six year period. So that's where leveraging the appropriate amount of debt. I'm not saying we issue so much debt, but then all we're paying for is debt. With our rates, we don't wanna do that. That's why again, doing the multi-year projections is important to make sure we're not gonna get ourselves in trouble.
The other thing that you paid Jake to, to mention was the fact that the better run your city is. The better the rating agencies like you and the lower cost your debt.
Absolutely.
I just beat him two years.
I, I was gonna say Becky, I think gives, uh, Dave Ramsey a run for his money here, cause it sounds like the financial stewardship is incredible. Pretty awesome.
I'll, I'll give you both your twenty dollars later. Um, so anyway, establishing appropriate debt service ratios.
I don't want it in cash.
No audit trails, no audit turns. Um, couple of steps I already mentioned that the mayor and the council have taken over the last few years to improve our financial stewardship. They make it a priority when we do the budget to always make sure our reserves are fully funded. Um, I just mentioned implementing that sewer utility tax that not only helped bolster the general fund. And the street operations fund, it also helped us pay off that North Kelsey debt. That was associated with that property that had been hanging over the neck of the city for a number of years. Something like that, much longer than it should have. But we were able to put the money together, pay that off again with planning ahead. You know, and looking at it over a multi-year period. Um, we, I, you know, we also maintain a bank of property taxes and I'll talk about that here in a little bit more. And then I've already mentioned about one time revenues, one time expenses. So we're not spending more than we actually have coming in, so. So some sample funding sources that, you know, we've already started talking about some of these. Um, these by far not an exhaustive list, but these are some of our bigger resources. Sales taxes, property taxes, contingency, impact fees, REIT. And then we'll end it with multifamily property tax exemption. Um, sales taxes, as we all know, when we go shopping, it's a tax that's assessed against the, the amount of the retail sale. It's added to the price of, so unlike a B and O tax that's paid on your gross receipts. As a business, when I go to buy that cup of coffee. Or that, you know, um, I like vinyl. If I buy a record, you know. Say it cost me ten bucks, we're gonna pay an additional. You know, nine, nine point four cents on that, if it costs me a hundred bucks, it's nine dollars and forty cents, our tax rate here is nine point four. That isn't on top of. Um, as you guys pointed out earlier. The retail pays it to the state of Washington Department of Revenue, who then turns around and distributes. To all the different jurisdictions that make up that nine point four. Just like with the property taxes, we do not get to keep the whole nine point four. The state gets to keep the biggest portion. So of the nine point four percent in our property taxes here in Monroe. State gets the first six point five right off the top. Then you can see there's a criminal justice tax that's collected. I will say that that is then shared with jurisdictions that have police departments. On a, on kind of this formula that the state uses every year, it's always been a mystery exactly how that formula works. It's not exactly per capita, because it doesn't equate to what I get for other things per capita, but we do get that back. Um, not the whole one percent the state collects. Then you have the city's portion here. These next three here is what the city keeps. That point one percent is something the city was able to impose. With way back in the day without asking for a vote. The transportation benefit district tax, I mentioned that earlier, that had to be voter approved. And it only runs for ten years. It can be renewed every ten years, we have to go back out and ask the voters to renew it again. Um, what I thought was smart of the city of Monroe, when they did it as a vote on the pro- on the sa- sales tax and not as a car tab. Is that then you also get to capture the people who come through town. You know, maybe they're gonna go up skiing, they stop and they fuel up or they buy equipment at Walmart, Lowe's, whatever. They may not live here, but they're driving on our roads. Then we are also collecting tax from them to help support our roads. Um, and then there was a voted point one percent to help fund our police department. Once that was approved, that was an ongoing, we don't have to go back out and ask for that one again. As you can see, there's also local transit. County mental health. There's the, these last two are new in the last couple of years, um, the one funds Snohomish nine one one now. Because that sales tax went into effect and that was voted by all the registered voters in Snohomish County and approved. There was a fee we used to have to pay as a jurisdiction based on a formula that had to do with our number of calls. As well as our population that we don't have to pay anymore, so there was an offset for that one. Um, and this one here, the county, um, housing and related services tax. That just went into effect this last October. But that's what makes up the nine point four. But out of that nine point four, only one point three stays here locally in Monroe. And just kind of just to show you where we're at compared to our peers here in Snohomish County. We're not the lowest, we're not the highest. Uh, the highest actually is either if you're in Mill Creek or Linwood. So when you go shopping in Alderwood, just keep in mind, you are paying Ohio sales tax. Than what you are paying if you shop local. This is where I always do my plug, always try and shop local first. If you can't find it local. Buy it online. Delivered in Monroe, sales tax goes to the point of delivery. So if you order from Wayfair or Overstock and you have it delivered to your to Monroe. You use Monroe's sale, they use Monroe's sales tax. And then at least we get our one point three versus if you go into a mall. That's in Bellevue or Alderwood. Sometimes you gotta go out there, I get it, I'm, you know, I'm guilty of that too, but you know. I try, believe me, I hear it from my staff all the time, all the Amazon boxes to come to. City Hall, cause I have everything delivered here to make sure that we get the sales taxes for when I'm spending money, so. Property taxes. Um, as we've already kind of talked about, it's assessed against real personal property. We've already talked about the potential for the increase. This council, at least for the almost six years I have been here. Usually does not increase the property taxes, what they are allowed to do by authority. If you don't take the full authority, you do what's called banking it. That does not mean that the county assesses it and then just sticks it in the bank. It just means that is authority we have that in future. We can exercise without going out and asking for a vote. Because in a given year, then we could end up raising more than one percent. But that's because we didn't do it the year before. Okay, but the value of that stays in the bank, so to speak. And for those online, I don't know if you see me doing the air quotes, so. Wanna call on Jake?
I'm sorry, I, I, I learned through questions, um, two questions. How big is the bank and then is there precedent for sometimes tapping into that bank for? For projects like I, I was thinking that transportation one, I assume that was for the main street renovation. I was trying to, I was trying to think about what may have caused that, but for instance, when that ends and say. We wanna build a, a road through. Wherever, Kelsey, a new road. Can you tap into that bank if you couldn't pass an initiative?
Yes, so again, remember property taxes are our most flexible resource.
Wow.
Once you tap into that, it becomes an ongoing revenue source. The, the council, and as you can see here, the fifth bullet point down. As of the beginning of January, and this was an estimate when I put this together, I haven't got my final certification from the county. Because of what we have used in, in, back in two thousand seventeen, two thousand nineteen, and then the council is using. About three hundred and thirty thousand of bank capacity in this current biennium. And we're buying specific things with that, we will still have, actually, I think my new estimates are closer to a hundred thousand dollars. Available in that bank capacity. Um, so it takes a little bit to build up. I mean, the reality is one percent of say four million dollars is only forty thousand dollars.
Yeah, it's like a pothole.
Yeah, exactly. But if we take it, it just gets absorbed in current. Programs versus if they let it accumulate. Then when they took it, like in two thousand nineteen, we used four hundred and fifty thousand dollars in bank capacity. We were able to hire three additional positions, two of which went to parks. And one helped fund one of the positions in community development. And again, this is an ongoing revenue source, so it made sense to be able to use it for operations like that. Now, I will say, yes, council could choose to use it for a capital project. My recommendation would be not to do that, cause we have very few. Sustainable, ongoing revenue sources for our operations side. And with capital, we may have other opportunities and we're gonna talk about those here in a moment.
Gotcha.
But yes, if you wanted to.
And then I, I may have been confused initially, so this. Banked amount, it doesn't mean you have to assess it, you don't have to increase the assessment of property taxes in order to tap into it? Are you saying that the county kind of holds it for you and?
It's an authority and this is the value of the authority. So again, if I'm collecting four million dollars this year. And say I've been taking the one percent every year, so that four million represents the full amount I could take right now. Then next year, my council says, we're not gonna take the one percent, our sales taxes are coming in so strong. We're just gonna leave our property taxes at four million. Now I have forty thousand dollars of bank capacity. Then in year three, when they wanna take the full one percent and their bank. They could increase property taxes by eighty thousand instead of just the forty.
Perfect, thank you very much.
That hopefully that makes sense. Contingency reserve, I mentioned that before, that's an amount that council can set aside as. Contingency reserve, I mentioned that before, that's an amount that council can set aside as a rainy day fund. Our reserve policy says it's represents one month's worth of general fund operating needs. Or state law says we are capped at thirty seven and a half cents for every thousand. Dollars worth of assessed value in our jurisdiction. So every year we take a look, what is that new assessed value? And up until this last year, that thirty seven and a half percent was the lower amount. And so legally, that's the highest amount we could hold in a contingency fund. So as you can see here, twenty one, I just show you here what those numbers looked like. That meant that at the end of twenty one, we had one point one six nine million. In the bank, this is actually real cash we hold in the bank. Again, that was also because we, we didn't have to touch that during COVID. But that was part of our plan. If over the three years of recovery from COVID. We knew we had this that we could tap into. And our hope was that if things didn't turn around the way they had, cause we didn't know back then. We had hoped that it wouldn't be until the third year that we would hit this to then carry us through into recovery. We have recession, everybody keeps talking about a recession looming. As the Federal Reserve keeps raising interest rates and suppressing, you know, building. You know, if people decide that, you know, because of inflationary pressures, they're not gonna spend as much anymore. And we see, you know, revenues start to decrease. We have this contingency reserve that we hope can help get us through because the economy is always cyclical. That's the one thing you can count on. How long those cycles last, we don't always know. But we wanna have money in place so that if we do start getting into a recession. It gives us some options on what we can do versus making drastic cuts. If that makes sense. So I just wanted to show you what we were looking at for the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four budget. We are now actually capped by the eight percent of general fund. Because our assessed values on average went up the year before by fifty something percent. For twenty-three, they went up on average like thirty-one percent. I don't expect to see that same percentage this next year, but. Even if it comes back down or even goes down a little. It's still gonna be higher than what it was two, three years ago, which I think people forget about with the value of their homes. So what's different that I hear and I read about for this potential recession coming up compared to the Great Recession. Is that people will have equity in their houses. That's what they didn't have during the Great Recession. And that can help get people through too. So we'll see. Impact fees, this kind of gets into a little bit of what you guys are doing, oh, sorry.
I do not.
Um, impact fees. These are one-time charges that are assessed against new development. Um, so as you guys are planning and then we create. You know, cause you guys plan for, you know, how do we deal with the population we're supposed to account for? Well, we have to develop certain infrastructure to support that new population. That new population comes because there was new development. The capital associated to support that new development, we can charge what's called an impact. Against it. But it can pay for only the public capital. Not any private facilities that may wanna come in to support that new development. So if the developer comes in and they say, hey, I'm gonna do my own private park, we've got private parks in this development. As we know, we have up in Mainview that we have in Wood, you know, Monroe Woodlands, there are private parks. You cannot use impact fees to support the private parks. They still have to support the impacts through the rest of the city that all that new population has. Especially schools, you know, you're usually bringing families in, you have a certain amount of kids. They're gonna need more classroom space, they're gonna need more supplies at the schools. That's why you see a lot of schools, schools impose impact fees. But what's interesting about the RCW with impact fees is that you cannot. Charge a hundred percent of the impact. From the new construction. So this gets back to the same concept that I started to introduce when I was talking about generational equity. People who already live here, they may not necessarily impact the need for that capital. But they get to enjoy it too when it's built. So that's the concept behind not being allowed to collect a hundred percent of the impact. From the new development. Those of us already here are gonna enjoy it too. What's interesting though is state law does not say what that percentage should be. So we just have to be able to, whatever we pick it to be, that we can justify. So a lot of organizations will use eighty-three and a half percent or eighty-six and a half percent. Only because a lot of grants require. You know, the thirteen and a half percent match. So why not? You know, it's like, it's, it's as good a benchmark as any other, quite frankly. So if we're paying for it with a grant, we can get a grant, then we can use the impact fees to pay the match. Kind of thing. That's where it helps. Usually what you go look for to, to make that match is your real estate excise taxes. And so that takes us right into the next. Just kind of shows you, we, for here in the city, we collect on parks. Just kind of show you here what those fees have been over the last few years. Nineteen was a very, very strong year for development, as I'm sure everybody who's still catching their break in community development can tell you. Or catching their breaths. Um, we were building left and right during that time. Traffic impact fees, you see the same kind of, um. Trend there. But reaped. So if we can't pay a hundred percent of the impact with impact fees. Another source that we can use is real estate excise taxes to make, make up that difference. Reap is charged on change in ownership. The reason that I say that is say someone buys a house like an invitation home. I pick on them because that's who I was renting from when I first moved into town. When I moved out, when I bought my house and they brought a new renter in, there's no change in ownership. So no reap, even though a new family came in. Reap is charged when the ownership changes on a piece of property. Reap can be used for capital. That is identified in your capital facilities plan. The six-year CIP, quite frankly, so again, as you guys are doing the cop plan and you have the capital element. This is one of the revenue sources that we look to and identify to help pay for that capital element. Reap can be used for utilities, it can be used for streets, for parks. If you are any city in the state of Washington, you can impose a quarter percent. On the value of the property that's sold to collect as reap. If you are a GMA planning city as we are, that's why we have you guys. Then council can do it without a vote, they can impose a second quarter percent and we do. So we actually collect a half, a half a percent in reap. But you hear us talk all the time about first quarter percent and second quarter percent. And the reason we do is that while both are restricted, which is why we, we. Uh, track those at a special revenue fund. The first quarter percent actually has a slightly more flexible. Use than the second quarter percent does. Specifically, the first quarter percent can be used for government facilities. So if we were to have our own library system, which we don't. If we had fire, we can build a police station with it, the city hall that we are doing. We can use first quarter percent money for that. Or in our case with the city hall, we are going to sell a bond. And then we are using identified first quarter percent reap to make the bond payment. So we don't have to use property taxes for that. It can be used to buy parkland. So when we bought North Hill, we used first quarter reap to do that. And then we were successful in getting a reimbursement grant from a state agency. The, the land cost us one point three oh seven million. We were able to get a million dollar grant, so we still had to pay the three hundred and seven thousand. And we used first quarter reap. And we track that so we can show we're doing it correctly. Cause second quarter reap, while I can still pay for capital in the parks. I can still pay for streets, I can still pay for utilities. I cannot pay for municipal facilities with it. And I cannot pay to buy land for parks with it. So it gets more restrictive on that second quarter percent reap and it's all laid out in our CW. Um, but then this goes back to reinforcing why we choose to show that in a separate fund. So it makes it very clear how we are using it. So that makes sense. Thank you for the time, this, I, I realize I'm taking a lot of time here, so. Again, reap is another one, sale happens, it gets recorded at the county. The county gives it to me the next month, so sometimes it can be almost a two-month lag here as well. We do also take a look. It used to be there was a little bit of a trend. Then there were some points and here, and this is in this, this last year. This would have been sales that happened in July, August. I think a lot of that was people really getting out there and getting off the fence before interest rates started rising. Um, but we had a big spike in reap at that point, and then you can see it came back down to earth. And notice it started going down as the federal interest rate went up. So we track this because so much of our capital is dependent on this money. So, and this too goes out to the council every month as well in the finance report.
So one other, um, item I don't see on here is, um, water hookup fees and sewer hookup fees.
They are treated like impact fees, they're general facility charges, they're specific to the utilities. They don't quite have. I mean, you, you, the, the formulas to create how much they are, there's a lot, there's some subtle differences to it. Cause it has to do with operations of the utilities too, that doesn't go into how we do impact fees. But they're all considered, um, growth, growth management fees. Similar concept though, so I kind of just think of them all as impact fees. But very, very observant.
Jake.
Yes, um, it's a question from an attendee, but is one, it's one that I share as well. Um, are reaps first quarter of the year or one quarter of one percent that is received annually?
One quarter of one percent.
Got it. You rock.
Softball questions, not that that's a challenge. Of course, I've been doing this a while, so. So. That was where I would normally end the budget one-on-one for you guys. But I know there's been a lot of talk about multifamily tax exemptions. I will caveat this with, I haven't had to deal with this in a number of years. More years than I want to admit. So I had to go back and refresh myself a little bit on this. So you are getting my refreshment on this, so please, if I, if, if you know something I don't, I will not be insulted if you point it out. But I literally went back and read the RCW again. I've talked, I've spoke with some of my peers at other cities of these zones. So I think I can answer a good portion of the questions. So I just wanna give you that caveat. RCW citation I have here for you, in case you get asked. And I believe that this presentation has been provided to you. Cause I know you're gonna wanna go back and review it all again after we're done here, um, while you're reading the budget book, of course. The MFTEs are restricted to cities with populations of fifteen thousand or more. Which we qualify, cause we're pushing twenty thousand now. Um, it is a property tax exemption. That's meant to, to stimulate multifamily housing. Because in order to qualify, the city has to create a zone. Developers have to then apply to the program and the city has to review to make sure that they would qualify. And you have to be building for structures that will house four or more units. So duplexes, triplexes would not qualify. It's gotta be a minimum of four units. I could have a single family home that could be one of the McMansions from back in the day. And split it up, and if it legally can do it within the zoning and the building codes and create four units. Then that could end up qualifying. But again, we have to create the zone first. And then what it does is if the project, if I'm developer X, I come in and I say, I'm gonna build quads. Down this street within your zone. And we've created the program that I can apply for either eight or twelve-year exemption from property taxes. On the value of the increased assessment. So the land, if it's blank land, the land is not exempt, the land still has to pay property taxes. But if I build a brand new fourplex. The value of that fourplex does not go on to the property tax rolls until the end of the exemption period. Be it eight or twelve years. And at the end of that period, then the value of that property at that time. Gets added to the property tax rolls as new construction. So it's just a period of time, you're just not paying taxes on the value of the improvement. It's not taking away from any taxes the jurisdictions are currently collecting, cause there was no house to begin with or no fourplex to begin with. And the land was already paying property taxes and still has to pay it. Hey, all it does is delay the start of when the taxes start getting collected on the development.
Commissioner, well, I think, uh, Commissioner Walker has a question.
Thank you for noticing. Jake, go ahead.
This is an easy one, I may have missed it. The exemption only applies to the city's assessed property taxes, right?
No, it's the entire property tax bill because the improvement does not get added to the assessment.
Wow.
So it's actually a very powerful tool and, and I actually go through some numbers here in a couple of slides.
Amazing.
And the exemption follows the property, not the owner.
Correct.
I think we have another question.
Um, yeah, and then this does not apply to the impact fees, right? So the impact fees are still collected and benefit like the school district and such.
Yes and no, um, it depends on if you have a program, which we do. That impact fees can be waived up to eighty percent. If you are specifically building low to moderate income housing. And we have that already codified in our code. So whether we have an, an MFTE zone or not. We, developers can already apply for that waiver, the eighty percent of impact fees. If they're building low mod income housing within, I think, the downtown core, so. And we actually also offer that with the, um, sewer water connections as well. So those are programs that are already there. What we're talking about here is property tax and to get back to Mr. Walker's point. This is assessment that if my land was assessed at a hundred thousand dollars and I build a half a million dollar fourplex on it. That land for the next, that property tax assessment for the next eight years is only gonna be on the hundred thousand. Which means the state doesn't get their portion, nobody else gets their portion. The theory is, but then I'm gonna have more population that maybe is adding to my sales taxes. That are buying utilities, that then adds to my utility taxes as well as my utility revenue. We're helping them build wealth if they get to buy the, the unit or at least they have housing. Um, now to qualify for twelve years. The developer X has to commit at least twenty percent of the units to low mod income. So it could be market rate housing and they would still qualify for tax exemption, they just don't get it for as long.
That is a pretty, uh, one-sided deal for the city in terms of. Using it, because it sounds like the, the biggest loser on the revenue front is everyone but the city. When it comes to tax collection, i- is, is that right? It seems like it's a pretty amazing tool from the city's. Point of view if the, if the goal is more low income housing. I mean, I, I guess I'm saying like, where are we the loser here?
Isn't it, uh, in mere projections, um, this is also what people. Well, isn't it uh in mere projections, um, this is also what people sometimes bring up is that. Then there's a shared load that goes, um, cause your budget is already calculated with. Um, the population growth and stuff, so isn't there a way that this burden of the tax is getting pushed back down to other people?
On paper, no. Because again, if that property never gets developed, I'm still only collecting on the land.
Right, but then the use fees and, I mean, there's more. When when there's more people, then there is things that they implicitly cost more for.
From the impact fees, yes, the impact fee side, yes, because the value of whatever I'm supposed to build within the ten years. Is not gonna change. I may, I'm just not collecting eighty percent of the impact fees from this particular property. But we have that already, whether we do this tax exemption zone or not, that's there already. Um, so, but from the property tax standpoint. It's not mine until I collect it and it wasn't there to begin with, that's the logic.
Those not in your calculation.
Correct, I calculate based on what my assessed value is now. So that's what I mean by the new construction. So again, property taxes, if the city were to impose its full one percent authority. It's always based on what I collected last year. New construction is then added on top of that. So if there's no new construction, cause it's got an exemption, I wasn't calculating that anyway.
So you, we are in charge of the assessed value, it's not like from the county?
No, the county does assess values ba- based on market.
So the one that you do is, would this one would not show up on that?
Correct. Correct. And that's the thing, is the amount we collect is based on the full collected amount. Not at one percent against the individual that you, so. If my house is worth two hundred thousand, and I actually have tables on this in my budget book also. If my hundred thousand dollar house pays a hundred dollars in property taxes. I can only collect a hundred and one dollars the next year. Even if that hundred thousand dollar house now is worth three hundred thousand. My one percent is on the amount I collected, not on the amount your house is worth. Which then means the rate per thousand I am collecting actually goes down. So where it may have been a dollar for every thousand in value. If it went up three times, but I only went up one percent over here. Now I'm actually gonna, you know, and I can't do the quick math in my head, but say it's now only seventy-five cents per thousand I'm collecting. So that's why I was saying to to Mr. Walker's question earlier. If your assessed value on your house went up, it doesn't necessarily mean your taxes went up, your taxes can only go up one percent every year. Unless we voted to impose more taxes on ourselves, which we did this last year. Does that help a little bit?
Yeah, I just know that there's an argument out there that. People feel like the tax exemption program puts the burden on more people.
Only if all those people then all of a sudden want us to hire a bunch more cops or. You know, then I gotta be able to pay for that. You know, and theoretically, this is now tax money I'm not gonna get for eight years.
I guess that's what I mean when I'm saying that they they implicitly, accidentally, they do cost more to the city when you have more people in the town.
Yeah, but I can make that same argument that, you know, a single-family home, you know, there's me, I'm a single-person household. I don't have the same impact, but when I vacated that four-bedroom house. The next family that moves in could have three kids. Yet the taxes that that house is paying is not gonna change. But yet there's more consumption of service. So there's always gonna be that side, I mean, I don't mean to sound, you know, combative about it, but. There's always gonna be that, you just never know, y- y- you know. I could have the same number of houses and the consumption can change year to year. Depending on, you know, the size of families that move in, or if it's a single couple with no kids, or, you know. Or maybe I have a dog instead of kids, or, you know, the 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 type of services I want to consume may be different. The tax is not necessarily gonna change, cause it's the same property. You know, so if we have a zone in town. And this is assuming that developers are even gonna wanna build these things. You know, in this market, we don't know. You know, again, it gets back to. Sometimes it's worth giving up a step to go forward three in a sense. And I and I admit, I look at it from a more fiscal standpoint. If I can get that body in here. When the tax that I may not collect anymore, maybe only twenty-five dollars for the year. Now I've got another family that's buying water, that's buying sewer. Who's, but you know, revenue to those funds are now contributing ten percent to my general fund. To pay for the parks, to pay for the police. I've got a family that may go go eat dinner downtown or along Highway Two. Who's gonna order from Amazon and bring sales taxes in. You know, maybe giving up that property tax is worth all the other revenue I could realize.
Yeah, those are good examples.
So, and that's what I mean by, from a property tax standpoint, it was money I never had to begin with. If that makes sense. And I hope that answers your question.
That's, that's a kind of good information we need, um, just because, you know, we don't sit where you're sitting.
Right.
Um. Melanie, do you have a question?
I do. Um, when for, is there any information on um the cities that have implemented this? Um, are the developers that take advantage, are they? Going for the twelve-year and actually adopting like? And uh including affordable housing in there, or are? The majority just going for the the eight-year exemption and still doing like um general value. Um, for the units, hopefully that makes sense.
So I'm gonna go ahead and take the lead on that, Anita will be coming back to you. I can't remember if it's your next meeting or in two meetings, but. She's been collecting that information to get back to the planning commission, cause that was one of your questions for us. Um, I was really.
Yeah, I wasn't at that meeting, I apologize.
Yeah.
Repeat question?
We're still doing that research for you, because at the end of the day, the city. Has to determine what program is good for Monroe. So is it the the short uh number of years just to get multifamily? Or is it really important to Monroe that? We want to go for that twelve-year because affordable housing. We need, we need to encourage its construction, and without that tool, it's not gonna happen, so. Um, the data is still coming, and I, again, I think it's your next meeting, but I will um. Follow up in an email, cause the next presentation um had planned on emailing you tomorrow, so, coming.
But that's a very good question, and if I may, I mean, anecdotally, I remember when the city of Tacoma created a multi. Multifamily tax exemption zone along its Tiafrost Waterway. Because that was an area that you would think right on the water would have been ripe for development, and this was back just before the housing bu- or bust. Tacoma created it, cause I remember looking at one of the condos that, yeah, all of a sudden, these condos were spreading out, but they were all market-rate condos. And one of the selling points to get. Uh, population to move in down there was that I was not gonna have to pay property taxes on it for ten years. You know, so it, that was very intriguing. Now I knew enough to know that after ten years, I was gonna have a shock of a bill. At that point, but at least for ten years, I could plan on that. And then maybe spend my money furnishing the apartment or doing whatever. Um, and it seemed to be very successful for Tacoma, cause I'll tell you, that is some prime property now, down there. Um. You know, again, that's anecdotal, though, I mean, that's just my own observation of it. Um, I will tell you that if you do it as the low mod income for the twelve years. You know, they there, something gets recorded on it, because then if they change the use of that property before that twelve years is up. Or say they end up not, you know, selling the twenty units or renting the twenty year units, twenty percent of the units. To low mod income. They violated the agreement, the county will go back and put the assessment on the tax rolls. As if it had been there from day one and collect the back taxes back. So there is a penalty if they don't do it right, and they don't commit to the timeline. And that can be a significant penalty depending on the value of the the improvements. Um, I did run up some numbers just so you can see, and this gets to Mr. Walker's point, he gets the gold star tonight. Cause he's getting ahead of me here, um. I do have, I did wanna list out what my assumptions were in using the numbers, um, they're all illustrative only. I did not try and figure out increases to assess values over the eight and ten, twelve-year period, that would have just taken way too long. Um, our estimated tax rate for this next year is only eighty-five cents per every thousand your house is worth. So again, if you've got a million-dollar home, you're only paying like eight hundred and fifty dollars to the city. Just saying, that's the city's portion. Um, made the assumption that the overall tax bill for all taxing jurisdictions was nine dollars. And the numbers I'm gonna show you are based on one year, okay? So. Say the property already has structure on there. The existing val- value of the structure, cause it could be an apartment complex. Two-point-five million dollars, that's the land, the existing building. We have the M F T E, the developer applies, gets approved, and they make improvements to the building. So then the building gets increased in assessment, an additional two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, cause they're just doing improvements. They're not adding units, say. The total new value then is two-point-seven-five for the building. But the taxable value remains at that two-point-five. They don't get to all of a sudden exempt what was already there. They only get to exempt the increase in the value. So that two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand. Represents two-hundred-and-twelve dollars and fifty cents a year for the city. The whole amount is the twenty-two fifty. So over the period of eight years. To get to Ms. Blair's point from earlier, had we been collecting the whole time, we would have only collected seventeen hundred dollars anyway. And that's money we would have never got if they never did the improvement. If you total up all the other jurisdictions, state, the county, the schools, fire district. You're looking at eighteen thousand, so what is that, it's sixteen-three for the other jurisdictions. Seventeen hundred for us, that we have in a sense, just not collected. Now come year nine, that's how much we're gonna start collecting, is that full twenty-two fifty. So I ran a couple of different scenarios here, if the value of the improvement is half a million. Say they added a whole new building to the value of a million dollars, that million dollars gets the exemption. Again, the original value stays on the tax rolls. They don't get to, all of a sudden, hey, I'm gonna improve this building, and the whole building comes off the tax rolls, that is not how this works. Keep remembering to look up to see if there's questions. That or I've just stunned you. Put you all into shock, I don't know. But again, this is just the property taxes. The impact fees, you're absolutely right, we have to come up with that money somewhere else, it's usually gonna be REIT. Um, or grants, you know, we try and get grants and leverage grants as much as we can. Um, but that's a program we already have in place. So. And that actually, Mr. Chair, concludes my presentation for the evening.
Fantastic. Thank you very much.
You're welcome, thank you for your time, so. I really enjoyed this stuff, so thank you.
It's very helpful, especially considering many of us are new.
And I am happy to come back as often as you guys want. Cause I really believe the more you know, the easier our jobs are, so. And that's my contact information, if you want one-on-one, I'm happy to do that too, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Becky, that was awesome.
There's my item seven point two, we have uh. Twenty twenty-four comprehensive plan update, capital facilities and utilities from Kate's.
Yeah, so do you want to continue, I'm looking at the hour? Or do you want me to hold this until your next meeting? I can get through it pretty quickly, and it's, I think, very timely because of the budget presentation, but I'd I'd like to throw it out there uh to the commissioners. How much capacity do you still have to take on more knowledge?
Commissioners, raise your hand if you need to tap out, I'm here, um, since they're paying me by the hour, I'm gonna sit here till midnight.
We're good, okay. Hannah, can you tee it up? Yeah, thank you again. Okay, thank you. So this evening, our next topic is capital facilities and utility elements, which the city of Monroe actually has combined into one element. Next slide. This project or this component, the really the biggest piece is reassessing what we have. And then after we go through the assessment of the different land uses, do we still have the infrastructure necessary? To service that, we're talking water, sewer, roads, parks, and uh, thank you. Uh, and because you've gone through the the six-year capital facilities plan. You've got a little bit of exposure last summer, because that's what we're talking about today, this is the financing. And making sure our infrastructure is available with new construction uh and serving our existing. Um, city or existing residents. Um, next slide. So capital facilities, what is it? Um, airports is an interesting one, because it's not just considered a capital facility, it's considered an essential public facility under the guise of Washington State. It's something that's very important to the state from a transportation and economic generation, but they're extremely hard to cite. And so they get their own category, we have first airfield, at least we do today, and so that's one thing that we need to consider in our plan. Other components are fire protection, which were part of Fire District number seven, so we need to coordinate with them. The municipal building, that's City Hall, the Police Department, and our Public Works Facilities, our water towers and the like. It's also our park plan, so as we discussed over the summer, the pros plan, there were a certain components in that six-year financing plan. That is, you need to show you actually can pay for these particular projects, so parks are included in the big-picture capital facilities. Electric power is actually considered a uh utility, but we also need to coordinate with Puget Sound, uh Puget. Snohomish County, or Snohomish P U D, as well as Puget Sound Energy. School districts, so the current plan, it only talks about the Monroe School District, but as Becky alluded to, we actually are also. Have the Snohomish School District, and that's up Roosevelt Road, so we really need to be coordinating with both school districts. And the way we incorporate them is we adopt their capital facility plans by reference. The city of Monroe actually does collect impact fees for both school districts. Uh, solid ways, we'd be coordinating with Republic for that type of information to ensure that they're thinking about their planning to serve the city of Monroe. Roads and transportation, that actually has its own element. But again, the projects, when you're going and you're budgeting every six years, that information needs to be included. And that six-year plan is physically constrained, and you have actual dollars. The long-range capital facility plan and transportation plan include include projects that aren't currently funded, we know we need them. But we're not there yet, so we're twenty-year horizons. The water system plan and then our wastewater treatment uh plant system. The one that's not on here is we also have a stormwater system, so that also needs to be included for our capitals, uh facility planning, next slide. Under the Growth Management Act, they define for us, we actually have three different uh definitions we need to look at. What is a pub- public facility? What is a public service? And then for Monroe, we are considered an urban government services, so that. The big difference is sewer, we provide sewer, if you're in the county, you're uh typically on a septic system, except for a few portions of Snohomish County. And they all have um a little bit different uh definition, of course, and we need to assess that a little bit differently. Um, public health, I did want to mention, you will see the in a future slide, but the ever- Public health, I did want to mention, you will see in a future slide, but the Evergreen Hospital is also considered an essential public facility. They're really hard to cite. They are extremely important to especially the city of Monroe. We have a larger area than just the Monroe or just Monroe that's being served. Next slide. So the goal, and this is one thing I mentioned at the last meeting, I need to come back to you. I need to give you that cheat sheet of all the goals of the Growth Management Act. Brandy is really good with the, we're trying to prevent sprawl, but there's a whole collection of things that the Growth Management Act was passed to do. So for public facilities, I'm just going to read it to you. It's ensured that those public facilities and services necessary to support development shall be adequate to serve the development at the time it is available for occupancy. And use without decreasing current service levels locally established minimum standards. So for all of our facilities, it's called a level of service standard. So for. For water. You have a certain amount of pressure. We're buying our water from the city of Everett. For police, there's a certain amount of time that the police department says, we're going to come for an active incident. And so those are level of service standards. When you grow. You may not, you might have to add to those systems. You might have to hire more people. Because when you're growing, you need to serve that, but it cannot harm what's already existing population wise. Next slide. So, and then this is pretty much straight out of the Growth Management Act. Again, the capital facilities element is a mandatory element. You need to provide information about what your existing facilities are, where are they located, what's the capacity? And then you have to forecast. We know we are going to have to add additional people. We're going to be getting additional job allocations. We're going to be asked to accommodate more housing. So in looking at our existing infrastructure. Do we have what we need to provide service to that? Or do we have to grow? I think Becky was mentioning like the wastewater treatment plant. We actually have additional improvements planned. And it's not just for growth, but because we have to get a permit through the Department of Ecology. We actually have to make improvements now. So that's not even talking about growth. There's changes in law. So this would be capturing that. The six-year financing plan, which again, that's what you saw earlier or you saw last year. And that's financing it for a six-year period. And then if you cannot provide the services, you have to reassess your land use element, and that's actually included in our comprehensive plan. It's just, it's a goal that you have to set, a goal that you need to have that documents all of your, excuse me. Assess the timely provision of adequate and current facilities. Oh, I missed. That's not the one I wanted. Anyway. If we cannot provide that, we have to go back and say, all right, we need to make different choices for our land use. We have to look at how we're going to accommodate people differently. And a couple of other comment, comment. Concepts I want to provide is concurrency. This is kind of ties into the impact fees. You either need to have the infrastructure in place at the time it's needed. For impact fees, it has to be constructed within six years. If it's not constructed within six years, we have to refund the developer. So I'm not sure if that concept has been provided to you. I don't believe it's ever happened because we're always, we're always building to accommodate new growth. Again, I just mentioned water, the city buys water from the city of Everett, but we actually have three other water districts that serve different parts of the community. You've got the Roosevelt Water Association, which is up off of Roosevelt. The Roosevelt area includes the New Woodlands Annexation area. That's a completely separate water district. We also have the Highlands, which is the northeast corner of the community. Or in our urban growth area. And then there's the Marbello, which is at the interchange of Chain Lake Road and Brown Road. I've already mentioned the treatment plant improvements. Okay, next slide.
Sorry to interrupt. I'd just like to request a motion to extend the meeting beyond. The scheduled end time. I'm making a motion to extend the meeting past nine o'clock.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, wishing passes. Thanks Hannah.
Thank you. And so then. Can we go to the next slide? All right, utilities. So the distinction really between capital facilities are, they're typically provided by the city of Monroe. A school district, the P U D, all of those are special utility districts or a municipality. Utilities are typically provided by a private provider. So Puget Sound Energy is actually considered a private utility. That's your Verizon Comcast, Ziply, all of those providers. They fall in the utility. So we actually have to reach out to them and say, city Monroe is getting ready to move the goalposts from 2035 to 2044. What are on your, what are in your plans? And then we would incorporate that into our document. Next slide. And then I alluded to this one earlier, just the distinction of essential public facilities. These are really hard things to cite. The city has actually adopted locally, local facilities, and I just listed these out for you. They're also actually in our municipal code. We have a chapter specifically for essential public facilities. You cannot typically deny them, but in our city, we require a conditional use permit. So you're, you're allowing it, but you're making sure. Because of its nature, it's hard to cite. It might have different impacts on the community. We have some additional regulations that we would apply. Next slide. Well, that's hard to see. I'm so sorry. And so again, the capital facilities plan, it includes an inventory of everything you have. It does a forecast of your growth, your housing, what are you going to need based on what you believe you're going to see in 2044? And then you have your needs assessment and then the financing plan. And again, that is again, what you saw last year, that six-year capital facility plan is the, the finite or the. Physically constrained. Portion that you're going to be building in the next six years. But you have projects on that list that go 20 years out that you may not have figured out yet how you're going to finance it. Next page. And then again, I probably didn't need to have the slide in here. The difference between the capital facilities plan again, is that big picture 20 years, you may not be able to pay for it. The capital improvement plan is a seven-year physically constrained. You're moving forward with these projects. Next slide. And so this, this little checklist is at, comes from the Department of Commerce. And so when we go through our comprehensive plan. We have to get our plan certified by the Puget Sound Regional Council. But it also has to go to the Washington State Department of Commerce, and they're checking to make sure that our plan is compliant with the Washington Growth Management. They also send it to other reviewing agencies. And so these are just, this is from the last look. What did, did we include this in our plan? And I wish I brought, so the, the element itself is only a handful of pages. But there's two very large appendices. And if you clicked on the links I provided in the, if you clicked on the links. Exactly. It shows you our entire water system. It shows you the sewer system. It talks about the treatment plant. And so this is just checking the boxes. Yes, we did our inventory. Yes, we did our forecasting. We will have to do this again with this iteration of the comprehensive plan. Next slide. And again, this is just. I'm apologizing because this slide was not easier, needed either. I covered it already. It's just again, a summary of all of the things that are capital facilities or utilities that we need to incorporate into this element. Uh, next slide. And actually, we can skip this one too. And this one. My apologies. I should have just gone through this earlier. So emerging, emerging themes. Yeah. So some of the really big picture things that changed with Vision 2050 are not necessarily going to impact capital facilities. But there's a whole new. Theme that we need to comply with, and that's really addressing equity. And so we're. When we start thinking about how we're going to implement our capital facilities plan in the future. We're going to have to create these new lenses. Are we treating everybody equally? It's similar to the presentation that Ben Swanson had gone through with the Parks Plan where they were trying to figure out. Does everybody have equal access to open space? Does everybody have access to a recreation facility? That concept, we need to be working towards for our capital facilities. So instead of just building all new infrastructure, not developer-driven up on the hill. Are we taking care of the downtown core? Are we taking care of the Freylins area? They all need to be dressed equitably now. So that's definitely a new change. Are there any potential changes to our growth, our urban growth area? Although the city has not requested any amendments to the boundaries, there are two active applications at the county, which. Think we brought before you. One is close to Chain Lake Road and Brown Road. It's a property very close to the Eaglemont Seven subdivision. It's under construction right now, the main view homes. And then the other one was added and it's. Along Roosevelt Road. Above the flood plains, but it's on the west side of Roosevelt Road. So if those lands get incorporated to Monroe, do we have to think about when they get annexed? How are we going to serve them? So that would be something that we need to look at. And then the other very, it's a, it's a. Very important to the Puget Sound Regional Council, there are amendments to the Growth Management Act. And that's about climate change. And what they're specifically looking for is. Are we going to be able to handle a flood? Are we going to be addressing wildfires? How is the city going to be able to continue maintaining sewer system? For us, we're in a unique position. From my previous employer, where the treatment plant is in the flood plain. It is literally adjacent to a waterway. Monroe's is actually a little, it's partially in the flood plain, but it, most of it's out. So we're in good shape for something like that. But there's, there's this whole, the theme about how do you come back from a natural hazard event? Cause it's very expensive. That we will be asked to address throughout our planning processes this round. Next slide. And then I've mentioned this already a couple of times, but there is also not only an increase in coordinating with our partnerships. But we'll be looking into the community, trying to make sure that we're hitting those equity issues. Next slide. And this is just a list of the people that we're going to need to coordinate. The other theme is that we need to be reaching out to our tribal partners. So for us, that's the Tulalups. The Snoqualmy. Potentially the Muggleshoot. Down south. And the Stilly. Still Guamish tribe up north. So those are in there. Want to be coordinating with the Chamber of Commerce. They're going to be helping us with recruiting businesses. They'll be giving us feedback downtown US too. And then I threw up here, the Puget Sound Regional Council. Again. They have to certify our plan in order for us to continue being, to be eligible to receive grants. That comes through the agency, and that's typically federal funds, really important for transportation projects. So just giving you a, an overview of some of our partner agencies. And so that was a really quick overview of the plan. I can tell you, our consultant team has already been doing, they already completed the traffic counts back, I want to say it was like over the summer in July or August. So when your car passes the little bumps on the road, they were looking at your transportation behavior. They already have all of our existing plans. And so what they're really waiting on right now is the work that we're about to do. And that is, where are we going to put these people? What kind of housing are we going to be looking at? Will the city be making changes that will impact how we serve the city? And so. Again, I'm going to put my little plug in. Next Tuesday, I'll be doing a very, Lance and I will be doing a broad overview for the city council. But the following meeting on February 7th. That's the meeting we sent, we did send a reminder invite to all of you. Mig is our consultant and they'll be going over some of this information, but a lot more details and the next steps. So. Any questions?
Questions from commissioners? No. So the 31st.
Is a council meeting.
Is the council meeting and we should listen in on the council meeting or attend.
Um, I leave it up to you because the, the planning commission has had the benefit of having these workshops since this, since fall, basically. The city council's not really had a presentation since the end of 2021. So it's a reminder to them and any new council members. This is the big project we're working on for the next year and a half.
Wonderful. Jake.
Um, Kate, with, you were saying that Anita is going to be coming back with some data on multi-family tax exemption next week. Is there any way that, I don't know how easy it would be to find like a percentage breakdown or a number breakdown of what amount of housing in Monroe? I guess single family or multifamily. I guess the multifamily would be tough is. Owner occupied versus like owned by corporations like Invitation Home or.
I feel like we have that data and that might have been part of Anita's presentation. In December, but I will definitely go back and find it for you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Kate, I'm trying to find it in the housing needs assessment. I'm guessing it's going to be in there.
Yeah, it should be in that document as well. That will be refreshed though with current information. And the rental of the residential, are you, you're asking about the single family specifically?
Yeah, that's, that's a great point. I guess single family. Just because multi, multifamily in Monroe is virtually, I would assume entirely apartments.
Yeah. Well, I think where I was going is if it's a rental, I may not have the breakout as if it's a.
Lambard.
Yeah, versus. But we can definitely tell you the owner occupied versus rental.
Awesome.
And also Jake, I'm looking at. Top buyers of multifamily. And there's. Sometimes there's no way. If it's an LLC, it could be a single owner LLC.
Yeah.
So. There's, there's names on here.
And I, I guess the, the purpose of my question is, is not related, not as much related to the, the tax exemption. I was just thinking about as we come up with the comprehensive plan zoning ideas. I'd be interested in kind of seeing if there's any tools that cities have used in the past about. I guess zoning that could be used to help kind of families with homeownership versus allowing corporations like Invitation or. Some of the other big ones to come in and kind of hoard, buy up all the single family homes. In my personal experience, it seems like that's a big problem. In Monroe. So I, I don't know, just an exploratory idea.
Not sure we can do that through zoning. That's. I don't know, since I saw.
I know. I, I have no idea.
Yeah, that's, it's a tricky one. I've been thinking about this a lot. 60 minutes at a deal on it last year about. This very perplexing situation where. Young families cannot buy houses because they've been purchased by a corporation and the rent is super high. So it's like you're.
Yep.
Like contributing. But I will see what I can, I can learn.
Thank you. I'm sorry for these, these huge questions.
Oh, it's, it's important.
Going on this adventure for, yeah, thank you.
It impacts the residents of Monroe and anybody who wants to be a resident of Monroe or somebody who lives here with their parents, but want to, you know, become independent.
Yeah.
Very challenging. So that's all I had for the presentation.
Okay, thanks Kate. All right. Kind of get you to throw in some thoughts about the December community development report.
Go for it. Did you want to do this, Hannah? We've been coordinating.
I'm so nervous. I get to show you guys.
I know. We're an intimidating group, aren't we? We're all just looking at.
Honestly, Jay.
All right, give me just a second while I pull this up. I will go ahead and. Share my screen. Okay, so um, I'm going to skip over a lot of the project updates that you'll see towards the end of the pack here. Um, we haven't really had many large updates on those kind of projects besides. The approval of a final plat forty six lot subdivision up on Chain Lake Road. It's Eaglemont seven. Uh, we'll mostly talk about the project highlights on the first page. Uh, we'll start with the project review to the left. You guys get a little shout out for your hard work on the definitions and the UDR updates. So um. Thank you. As far as the project highlight, uh, we pointed out the Adkison Estate Adult Family Home. They had started their application process with the city in May of twenty twenty one. Permits were issued in August twenty twenty one, and after nearly thirty inspections, they received their final. Approval from the city in September of twenty twenty two. And this is also, um, they're small family owned, family run. Um, and they also received ARPA funding too. So they were able to make some improvements in their yard to make it more accessible for the residents. Got some before and after pictures and. Picture of the family getting everything built, ready to go. So. Oh, and also I kind of wanted to point this out. I don't know if you guys remember in Becky's presentation, she got to a screen where it showed the park impact fees. And twenty nineteen was like through the roof. So this is the number of units developed in multifamily. And look at twenty nineteen, she's. Pretty high up there. So that just shows you what sort of. Effect those developments have on our community. So when you drive by seeing apartments being built. Yay, new playground equipment, right?
Portion thereof.
Yeah, a portion thereof. So. Any questions?
We, and Anita, go ahead.
I have a question. So when we talk about the population rate increasing about one percent per year. How come, what, how are these numbers? When do these numbers show up on this report? Cause it seems like every one of these reports, it's like forty six lots. A hundred and three lots and all of that is usually, you know, one to four more people. So that would, with the calculations, we should be growing. What would that be? Yeah, only like two hundred people a year or something. And it seems like every, every. Month or two months of these reports, we're, we're growing that. So. Do these numbers keep staying on there? And that's why I'm seeing them multiple times? Or do they only show up at the? Final of the report? Can you help me understand why it seems like there's always a whole lot of subdivision happening? But our, our population doesn't increase like that.
Sure. So. It's an average over time. Our population some years is higher and some years is lower. This information is current activity. So. As mentioned earlier tonight, our population. We're going to hit twenty thousand next year. And so these projects are coming online, but the lot, the lot has been created, but the house has not been constructed yet. The other thing that we've been uh made aware of and. You probably, you probably have friends in this situation is that. Uh, according to research from the Washington State Department of Commerce is that right now we have families living with families, living with families. Because they cannot afford to move out. So even though we are building all these new houses. It is going, you're going to see an increase in population, but it may not be as large as you think because we have um. A supply issue in housing. Over time. Our population is growing at one point two percent approximately, but it's not, it's, it's not a straight line. It's up and down and up and down. So that's an average.
Over how long is the average?
Well. That's at this point, we're going on what twenty years? And some years, because back in twenty, was it two thousand? Eight or nine, there was no development occurring for two, I don't want to say it's two years.
Well, you, you have single family permits in two thousand twelve of seventeen.
Yeah.
So it, and, but these are permits. These are certificate occupancy. So there's.
Yeah.
There's a little bit of discrepancy there, but there was a lot of years where there was no building at all.
So then, yeah, it's the, the fact that it's average makes more sense because we could have seen more like a ten percent increase in the last two years. And it's averaged out over the ten years when there was a few times when there wasn't any.
My, my data says seven point four percent over five years, which is basically your, your number, right?
And so, and, and exactly so that this one for the single family. That's by year. But if you take the actual population. It averages out to about one, one point two eight percent. It's not a straight line. I'm more than happy to bring data though, because I love data. And you can look at that on um, the Office of Financial Management. I can bring you a sheet in it, but it shows you our actual population increase by year. There's not a direct correlation.
Um, Anita, she wanted you to talk about some of the new.
Oh, yes, yes.
Is there anything besides the illustrious Wingstop that we need to know about?
That's the only one that she, she, she was like, it's official. We can say the name of the restaurant that's going in uh next between Starbucks and Big Five is Wingstop. They're in with their permits. It's official. We hope to have some more exciting news in the near future, but we haven't gotten permits yet.
There's a Euro Stop that just opened in town. Right? No, no, not have it. They haven't opened, but they got their sign up and they've got their permits into. So that's there by J and O barbecue.
So in that little strip.
Yeah, new Greek restaurant.
Awesome. Regular discussion from commissioners. Oh, we have a question for Melanie. Go ahead, Melanie.
Yeah, um, with Wingstop is there like, do they have a plan to put in like a back door? Like, how are they planning? I'm sorry, how are they planning to mitigate the already chaotic parking lot that is there? It's a disaster with the Starbucks drive through. In Big Five and it's really hard and the sidewalk doesn't wrap around. So I'm just curious, are they going to put in a, a back entrance? Cause that would be helpful.
Your back entrance is going to work because there's always twenty cars lined up. So.
That's true too. So it's, but like, there's at least parking back there, but there's.
Yeah, that's a great question, Melanie. Maybe drones delivering?
I mean, there's, yeah, I, I hear that Amazon might have some robots that aren't being used, but.
Connor.
Just, I'm so excited. It's there. I'm ridiculously excited for Wingstop, seriously. But when I was like, the location, I was like. Really interesting choice, but okay, I'll be there. I will. Just interesting choice of location.
All right. Um, as long as you, we have the mic on you. Um, start with a discussion with you.
Okay. Um. I don't have a whole lot. Um, I, I do have a request. Um. For a, maybe an agenda item. I don't know how that formally has to happen, but maybe for the next meeting. For us to um discuss and talk about the meeting, our meeting dates and times. And the reason, and I'm here, I want to preface this by saying I'm here no matter what the decision is. I would just love to have a, a. Uh, commission discussion about it because a tiny pet peeve of mine is that we have in this city, we have meetings that overlap each other in different entities. And um, like for instance, our planning commissions are the second and fourth Mondays of the month. So our school board meetings. And so um, I would just love to have us maybe talk about either moving the data, the day of the week or just swapping. So it's like the first and third Mondays. So I don't know if there's a formal way to get that on an agenda for future discussion. Um, but that would be a request of mine is that we at least bring it to the table to talk about and yeah.
On that, I'll have to look into what flexibility you actually have. It, it might not be up to the planning commission. So I need to clarify that.
Okay. I think it is. I think that in terms of like. Bylaws and stuff, I'm pretty sure that it's. Up to us, but yeah, if there's anything that's contrary to that, then yeah, let me know.
Will do.
Janelle?
I do not have anything tonight.
Thank you. Jake?
I don't have anything. Thank you guys for being patient with me.
Thanks, Jake.
I'm going to say thank you to Kate and Becky and.
Same here, nothing here. Good night.
All right. Steph, anything to? Brief us on before we leave?
Um, I actually do have one topic for you. Um, tomorrow night I'll be introducing another topic to the city council that will. Um, be coming back to planning commission with the comprehensive plan update. One of our criteria for the housing element is uh, it's a trickle down and the state passed House Bill twelve twenty and twenty twenty one. And it specifies that a city not only has to plan for a certain amount of housing, but now we need to make sure that we're hitting. X number of units by income bracket. And. The way that it works is commerce with the Office of Financial Management says you're going to have X population. We think you're going to need X number of housing. That information is then provided to Snohomish County. And through the Snohomish County uh tomorrow, coordination with the county and the uh, all the jurisdictions. They come up with the best formulas to figure out how each city. Will receive its allocation. And so at council tomorrow evening, I'll be introducing, there are three methodologies. Two that were provided by the um Department of Commerce. And a third that was created by Snohomish County tomorrow, Planning Advisory Committee. And just at a high level, the first methodology says that you have to accommodate these new allocations by income. Within all of your new housing stock. The second alternative says you get credit for providing uh housing within each economic bracket. Already in your community and you should, you should rec, uh, receive credit for that. The interesting piece with that particular alternative says that you're, you could have negative numbers, which would mean in theory. Another jurisdiction has to take on the additional amount that you're already providing. So the uh third alternative. Is a hybrid of the two. You still get credit, but you don't go below zero. No community. Doesn't have, you're not, you're not forcing another community to take on what you're already providing. So a good example I always think about is. Uh, Monroe or Marysville or Everett, who do provide some amount of affordable housing versus a community like Woodway. And so that tried, tries to figure out, you know, what's the best method? So I'm taking that to planning commission. Uh, sorry, to city council tomorrow evening as an introduction, and that may also continue on to their meeting on the thirty first. What that means is I will go back or Lance will go back to the Snohomish County tomorrow, Planning Advisory Committee and say. The city of Monroe likes method. Whichever is most appropriate for our community. That will go through that process. It, it's typically by consensus. And so then based on that Snohomish County will set the number of units. In the countywide planning policies where you will also find our population and employment projections. So. Um. The Department of Commerce is still working with the final number. So I hope to have better information in March, but I just wanted to make you aware because that will be a component of the housing.
Can I ask on this question on that?
Yeah.
When you said it's a consensus, so all of Snohomish County will have to do it, one of the three methodologies, or we still as a city get to decide?
Everybody has to agree to the same one. And so the way this process works is Snohomish County tomorrow is made up of. Um, there's the planning directors, public works directors, uh, city administrators, and then there's the. Um, elected officials who they will make a final recommendation to the city counter to the county council. The county council has the ultimate. Decision making, but it's a collaborative process because we're all trying to work this together. And we all have to use the same methodology at the end of the day. Um, just to make sure. Oh, the only other thing, um, this is also comp plan related. Uh, there are two dates we're looking at for the community wide kickoff meeting. I am working with the school district right now to get the specific facility. It'll either be in mid-March or mid-April. As soon as I get that date locked in. I will make sure that we send you another save the date reminder.
Hello?
Um, I don't have anything new to bring to you guys, but just to follow up on Melanie's question about changing the days we meet. Um, so it is in the planning commission rules of procedure that it's second and fourth Mondays. But it's also in the planning commission rules and procedures that it can be changed uh with a vote. Of the planning commission. Um, but I just would like everyone to consider the fact that this room is a shared space. With other boards, commissions, committees, city council. Um, sometimes court will be here until the end of day. So that would mean. Staff staying past closed to set it up and then having to come back and still stay late. Um. And also we use contractor services for AV. So there's just a lot of factors to consider when we talk about. Changing something. That seems like it would be simple, like moving at days of weeks. But nothing is simple when there are so many moving pieces. So. If that's something that you would still like to bring forward, like please email me and we can um, figure out something for an agenda item.
Yeah, I've, I've already covered that. We, but. We have multiple people we need to talk to before we come back with actual op. Actual options that we could. Implement.
But it is an option to be voted on by planning commission.
And Lance is online if you want to.
Oh, great. Lance, are you still there?
I am here, yes.
Would you, do you have any uh?
I don't, I don't have anything to add. I want to, um, I, I want to uh. Thank the planning commission for all of the good discussion and good questions tonight. That was. Uh, uh, um. More the most interesting budget discussion that I've been involved in in a long time.
That's great. Thanks for, uh, thanks to everyone for sticking around extra time tonight. Really, really appreciate it.
I did, I did want to, I, you know, not like we're trying to throw a cold blanket on the idea of changing the time, but I, one, one thing. Um, from a staffing level is in terms of changing. From like the second to the first week is if we're doing, if we're doing meetings on the same week that we have city council. Uh, it, it puts a, it puts a tough burden on staff to be able to do. Agenda bills for two different commissions on following day. So um, that's, that's just that. That'll probably come up in discussion if we, if this goes any further.
Appreciate the input, Lance. Yeah, and some of us for the last six years have arranged our schedule around the second and. Fourth Monday of the month and. Couldn't manage uh something else because we rescheduled our entire, so you know what I mean? Yeah. Okay. Would anybody like to move adjournment?
Like to make a motion to adjourn?
Thanks, Jake. Do I have a second?
A second?
Thanks, friend. All favor, please say aye.
Aye.
opposed, motion passes. Thanks, everyone.